So we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. We'll start with our roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Anita Lowery.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Kira Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Joe Towor.
Here.
City Attorney, myself, the present, or City Clerk is absent. So first we'll approve our agenda as it was made.
I'll make the question.
Second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, the approval of our meeting minutes from May ninth, twenty seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve them as written, second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. So our next section of our agenda is the public forum, where we invite anyone from the city to address the council. In this section, we'll allow you two minutes to address the council. We may ask you questions. However, we won't take official action on anything that's brought up here in the public forum. Okay? Yes, ma'am? Tell us your name. Step forward.
And no complaints today.
Well, come on up here so we can hear you.
Since you know complaints.
That's right.
Kudos to Marple's presence over on Phillips Street by Harps and that mess. And kudos to Christine Dryman for helping weed two of our gardens at the park. We really appreciate all of it.
And we thank you. We don't get that often. Would anyone else like to address the council? Yes, sir? Tell us your name.
Steve Winkler, fourth resident. Sorry, no kudos, but a couple of things have come up. At the meeting of the Economic Beautification Committee, the last meeting, we discussed something that about the, you know, when we started that committee, we, there was some, we raised the fees on the business licenses and we established a list in the website under communities as businesses in the area. There's a list of businesses, we put that up there, and then it was an alphabetical, which, okay, we're going to put it in by categories. So it's kind of a thing, and we think it's kind of helpful that people can go in there and look, and they get an idea of what the businesses are in West Fork for people that are moving here or outsiders like that. But it seems like recently that the, whoever's in charge, upkeep on that, which we discussed, no one really kind of knew, is that it's outdated. There's a number of businesses in there that don't, no longer exist. And then we know of businesses around town that aren't included in there. So, you know, the whole website, we talked about that, it seems like it's not getting the attention. You know, it's, I think it's important that the information that goes out there be accurate. And you go through it, if you do go through it and you look, and you'll see, well, you know, Chief Watts is no longer the chief, and his picture's in there, and, you know, the, it says, here's the latest minutes from the Planning Commission, and if you open that up, you'll see the latest ones are in two thousand fourteen. And, you know, there's other things in there, you go through there, and we want it to be, I think, and the economic people interested in it, it should be a resource. And then, so we're wondering who does that, or how that happens, or, you know, administrative services, or whatever. Then the other thing, there's been a couple of things that have come out on the website that don't seem to be quite accurate either. One is in the mayor's message, mentioning that the Planning Commission has made, approved a couple of building permits for property up behind Harps. Well, if you look in the municipal code, the Planning Commission doesn't approve permits. They don't, they don't approve them. They can make recommendations and stuff such as that. But if you read the code, it says the building inspector will present those to the mayor. The mayor presents building, building permits to the council, and the council approves building permits. And I like that he said that there's more building permits, but I would think it'd be helpful if you said it with a number, you know, saying there's, oh, there's more, what, how many more? Are there six building permits last month, or, you know, a little more quantitative data? And so anyway, I just noticed that the municipal code is on the website. And even though there's, some of it is out of date and this and that, the basics are there. And the way I understand it, I've had discussions with people, whether that municipal code is actually law, or if it's just guidelines. And I think we need to clear that up. You read it in there, there are sign ordinances, or something about how things operate, there's that, is that, is that the city law, or is that, you know, just suggestions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody else like to address the council? Yes, sir. Tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Greg Koraleski, resident of Greystone subdivision. I guess it's a follow-up. Since I was here originally, the mayor's changed and never really checked back on my own to see where it went. But I guess we have a, we have a covenant, but it never got a Property Owners Association, so it doesn't really have any teeth. There's nobody to really back up anything that goes on in the, in the subdivision. Initially, when I came, a lot of the lots weren't getting cut by the property owners, you know, the vacant lot owners. And that was taken, you know, the guy that's on this forum for the covenant, Johnson, he went bankrupt, and the bank took it over, so then the bank owned it, so then the city hounded the bank to cut it, which they did. Well, now those have all been bought by another developer. Well, now the weeds are, you know, three foot plus and keep on going. So I guess my one question is, is all the recommendations and all this stuff on the covenant that's filed with the state and, you know, run through the city, if it doesn't really have any teeth, is it still binding? I know it's still filed, so that's one question. So, and that kind of leads to the developer that's getting ready to leave there. Every time he develops a property, he pollutes another vacant lot, you know, and he's getting ready to just high a tail and out of here. So I guess my question in turn, you know, a lot of stuff has happened, so we can't go back, but I guess I'm looking, going forward. We got two good builders in there now, and they're just setting the precedence that this guy could never match. So I know you can't prevent an individual guy from coming back in, but you can kind of protect what type of guys come in. You know, if we want to develop this community with businesses, as this other gentleman said, and bring more people and more development, while there's some issues that could be addressed, and I guess that's what I'm just gonna bring it out. So I don't know, I know up north where I originally came from, when there's a permit, they would not release occupancy until all X, Y, and Z were met. And if pollution and littering was one of them, maybe that's a place to get some revenue. I guess it's just an idea, you know, throwing it out there and seeing what we can do. My second question is, is water pressure. I know it's pretty low, and I don't know, never asked the question, and I just throwing that question out there, is that something that's being looked at? Because it does present a problem. You know, with the more people that comes up, I know the head pressure's gotta be really low, the tanks are almost level with the ground. So I don't know if they've ever looked at putting in some, you know, stations to boost the pressure. I mean, during peak time, if you ever go to water your lawn, I mean, it shoots up about three feet, you know? So I know it's kind of, it's probably on its way, but I guess that's the last question I had brought out there, if somebody could look and see if that, if something's ever going to be done, because as you add more people onto the system, it's just gonna, you know, increase the problem.
I can tell you that last night the Water and Sewer Committee met. Unfortunately, Isaac, our Public Works Director, isn't here tonight. But they are looking at some possible expansions to our water system, some different things there.
I'm sure it's ongoing, so it was just kind of put it out there.
I haven't heard of it.
Well, they usually know a rate. You can call, and they say you can get like a pressure, and I think we were, last time we did, a couple of years ago, it was like thirty-five to thirty-eight pounds or something like that. Yeah. And the farther away you go. Correct.
Stuff in the ground that if we try to boost the pressure any...
Breakage and faults.
We're looking at that, so.
Right, right.
It's kind of a, you know, six and one, half and a dozen of the other.
Right, right.
Do we put up with low water pressure and try to boost it at your house with something else like?
Well, and that was something I was looking at, because there are systems that you can actually, it's got like a pressure tank and, you know, like on a well.
They were talking about a four hundred dollar system last night, that it's like a self-contained unit. But they also said this, I learned this last night, I'm obviously not a Water and Sewer guy, so when I tell you this, don't be impressed. But there's a state minimum that we have to meet with water pressure.
And I'm sure you're within the limits. I mean, you have to meet it, right, right.
I was surprised, it's only twenty, I think it's twenty-two pounds.
Right. Well, I know they, I know there's like an average, but it depends on how developed the town is, the size of the towns, and what type of water, you know, systems they have and water towers.
You can't move to the other side of town, and they have a hundred and ninety pounds of pressure over there.
Seriously?
Yeah. Because the tower's up a lot higher.
Oh, sure. That's why they got the reducing valve on there to regulate that. Yeah, that creates some other problems.
I will, I will talk to Isaac about that.
Okay, I appreciate the time.
And to let you know, on the subdivision, on the subdivision, I got another call today on that, and I spoke to Isaac about some ideas where we can start looking into that.
Okay, but yeah, Johnson, and I forget the other guy's name that just came in there, man, they're just...
Is all the pollution and trash debris?
Um, yeah, and we kind of, it's kind of in one spot now. Before, he was just kind of dropping it wherever.
The other person that called me today said that they scraped the, scraped the grass off of a lot, and so now we're just getting dirt run on.
Oh, yeah, that is the big issue. That's the one right behind me, that's, what is that?
Four oh two, I think.
Lot, yeah, twenty, I think it's lot twenty-three.
But...
Yeah, they scraped the topsoil off, and there, no grass ever, or weeds ever grew, so now every time it rains, you get three or four feet of mud onto the road. One, I know the one old guy that lives over there, he's shoveling it, but it's, it's losing battles, so I told him, I said, hey, just leave it cool.
We're about to get a full Planning Commission, add some of the things, some of the issues that we're gonna begin addressing to make sure that...
Appreciate it.
Make sure the city has some teeth that we can protect.
Right, right. Well, it just gives you guys nuisance calls and things you don't, you know, you're involved in that you could, you know, doing during regular hours during the week versus, you know, somebody calling up and rattling somebody's cage, so. All right, I appreciate your time, thanks.
Would anybody else like to address the council? No? Okay. We'll close our public forum and move into our business reports. We have John Riley at first, the library report.
Things are rolling along well at the library. We have our ongoing book club and knitting clothes meeting through the summer, and we have had a brief hiatus for the children's programs, but that's going to start up, our summer children's reading program will start, start up this Monday formally with a concert with, by the Kinders, Brian and Terry Kinder. That's going to be at one o'clock at Library Hall on Monday, June nineteenth, and we're hoping for a really good turnout for that. So if you know any grade school kids or younger, certainly would enjoy the concert, and then I understand there's going to be refreshments, popsicles, and other things for, for kids, and we're going to try to get, get them all reading logs so they can start to keep track of their reading for the summer, and we plan to display, you know, names and how they're doing throughout the summer. So to encourage, encourage, you know, the grade school kids to read, for the parents to read to the younger kids through the summer. And then we'll, we'll have various programs every Monday at one o'clock again through the summer for six weeks in a row, and then we'll have a party at the end and give out surprises to some of the top readers and everything, so. Anyway, so it's, we've got several people working very hard on it, and they'll have a lot of support through the friends at the library as well, through, you know, volunteering to support those activities, so we hope, hope for a really good turnout this, this summer and get a lot of kids involved, a lot of families involved in that. And other than that, not too much to report. Open for any questions.
John? John's being modest. Just let everyone know, the library had four thousand nine hundred and one items checked out the past month, and there was twenty-two hundred and forty-one people that entered the building.
We get pretty busy sometimes. It's pretty steady and sometimes very busy, so.
Let's see, we get traffic.
Appreciate the traffic, appreciate when people come in, so. Thank you.
Thanks, John. We'll have Paul editing that, do we? So next is John Nelson with a police report.
Okay, we had two hundred and eighty-seven service calls, hundred and seven citations issued. That's a lot higher than normal. Most of that was based on Memorial Day at Riverside Park. You know, we arrested for everything from public intox to minor possession to disorderly conduct. We had a large rock thrown through a front window over a dispute. A lot of parking citations, they parked up and down Robinson in people's front yards, all over the place, pretty much. I think we have, what, seventy-five parking spaces down there? And we estimated in between five or six hundred people there. Our warrant arrests were up this month by a little bit. We have, as many of you are sure noticed, we have started posting on Facebook with the approval of the judge. So if you want to do the crime, you can become a star.
Have you seen the papers yet?
Yes, that's kind of where we got that, a little bit of it. As far as our training, we have scheduled and have approved an ethics in law enforcement, our racial profiling, and the use of the JPX pepper gun. We approved that through the council on our, slipping my mind, on our policies. So we're going to go ahead and get that going. They've been sitting there for about four months. We attended the National Memorial to represent Paul Mule, Paul Mueller, that was held in Fayetteville. We took part in the click it and ticket, and I think that's about all of it. Do you have any questions?
Putting it in here, how many people or how many fans of Prairie Grove you guys took in last month?
That was last month, and I believe that was almost four hundred, three hundred and ninety-something pounds, yep. Also, I wanted to hit on that Hesper that we had posted on our Facebook. He has now been arrested through Prairie Grove. We have not seen him back in West Fork. He was arrested on a felony for breaking and entering. We mean beforehand, I didn't really get into it, Prairie Grove went ahead and posted it. He has went to prison twice for stalking in Pennsylvania, has a sixty thousand dollar bond out of Idaho, and has been convicted in several states. So I hope we've worried him off. He contacted me right after he hit Facebook and said he wouldn't be back to West Fork. It kind of shook him up with some of the comments, so maybe he won't go back to Prairie Grove either.
Any questions for John? Thanks, John. Up next, Public Works, Isaac Parterson. He's not with us tonight. I think he's doing something really important. I don't remember what it was. But on his, on his report, we have Nick's here to bring up some stuff. Nick, as you come up, I'll just go ahead and go over some of this other real quick. You guys did see the tank inspection report that we received? If you guys are interested, Isaac has individual reports from each of those tanks with pictures that shows the situation of some of our tanks. We need to be prepared that there's some, there's some improvements to be made. You can read through here and see some of it. You look at the pictures, and it becomes more apparent. This is one of the things that the Water and Sewer Commission was discussing last night, but need to be aware of that, because that's something that's going to, the maintenance and repair on those is going to hit us coming up soon, so. Yeah, yeah, we don't have a choice. That's a good point, Joe. Did you have anything else from last night's meeting?
We, about the water pressure, we did discuss, we do have one tank that's in for repair, and we discussed relocation that tank to higher elevation may be help with the pressure, and that's something we're going to look at.
Nick, go ahead.
You want me to, what do you want me to cover on the?
Cover the update for the sewer project in West Fork Acres.
Oh, okay.
And go into change order.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to get into change order right now, but, yeah, as far as the update, out in West Fork Acres, you know, where they've been working for quite some time, they have installed all the sewer main pipe, all the eight-inch pipe is, is in, and it's in service. And contract right now has plumbers out there tying houses over onto the new services, so we're hoping here in the next several weeks, month or so, to have over a hundred houses tied on, and then the last bit of work we'll be doing is there at our best bank. We're doing a war under the road and realigning some sewer over there up to, up towards Easy Mart, so getting towards the end of it. We're, we're almost done, and get to see how everything's working now that we've spent, spent almost a year on repairs here and ready to move to the next step, so.
I guess yours later in business.
Yeah, I can, I can talk about it then.
Okay.
Sure. And y'all have any questions on the...
Are you going to replace all the service lines?
No, well, what we're doing is we're, we originally were going to replace the property line, and then we're finding that a lot of the lines were in pretty poor condition all the way back to the house. Some of them are clay lines, the roots growing through them, so we, we had that change order, I think it was change order, the last one, change order four, we added in some extra footage just in case we need to do that. And they're basically going service by service, and if we find cast iron line that looks good, we're having it cambered to verify that it's good all the way to the house. If it is, then we'll tie on there. If we find a piece in between that's clay or something that's in bad condition, we just go ahead and replace that as well. So we're, they're kind of going on a case-by-case basis, but so far, I'm not sure how many services they've done, but it sounds like a lot of them they're having to take all the way back to the house right now. They're finding a few good ones, but that was, that was a big part of doing this, too, that the, that the state let us incorporate the service lines into it, because that, that's a big part of the problem. So we're, we're very thankful we can do that, and the homeowners aren't having to pay for it, too, because that's, that can be quite expensive to hire a plumber to do that, so.
Any other questions for Nick?
All right, thanks.
Next is Parks Report. Chad's not here either. He is actually working tonight. He's in Farmington at a meeting. But we should have him back. He's been gone a couple of meetings. He should be back for our next meeting. Parks Department didn't, or Parks Commission did not need. And Chad, of course, has been busy with, with the softball programs, baseball programs, summer ball programs. He did want me to, to mention that our Fourth of July celebration is going to be on the Third of July. It'll start at six o'clock, and he also wanted me to mention that if any of the council members were free, he would love to have some help. He mentioned in years past that he's kind of tried to set up like a rotating schedule so we're not down there entirety of the time, or, you know, at least not volunteering or working, but, so if anyone has some spare time, we'd love for you to call and volunteer for that. And the same goes for the citizens.
He did say he, he doesn't need any help during the day to set up. He'll have everything.
So not set up, he'll...
He'll have all that under control, he just needs concession and everything during the event.
Last year. That's good.
Yeah.
Other than that, the ball programs are coming to an end.
I do have to brag, because we were playing in another city, I went to the city for Van Corb, and their coaches came to us and said how jealous they were of our fields and facilities down here at Carter Park, that how great they looked, and that they were jealous, and that we were lucky to have Chad, and we needed to hold on to.
That's true.
That everything looked exceptional, and they were, because their fields were all.
And I think all of us that are involved in the summer ball programs will, can say that West Fork is one of the few towns where, where the parks are actually, the quality is increasing. Most of the others are, are starting to fail, so that's a big out of order chat. Thanks, Luka.
I've had to, well, as we progress and grow down here, please keep parking in mind, because if you've gone to Farmington, oh my gosh, I, I can't describe the parking over there.
People from the church, too.
They've got more fields than they've got parking. It's dangerous. It's very dangerous.
Yeah, you know...
You can't see, and there's people parking everywhere, and it's, so keep, we need to keep that in mind as we go down here.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any other thoughts on the Parks Department? Chief Myers, fire report.
Basically, I just kind of want to give props to some of our guys. We had three of our guys, two from another department, kind of teamed together and went to Fireman Mustard this past Saturday, won second place, you know? We won a thermal imager, which was great, about three grand, so saved us from having to buy one new one. Five of our guys just finished first responder class. Didn't want to mention anything until we got their certificates, which I got today, which was great. You know, want to make sure, hey, it gives us five more people to respond to medical calls, which you can tell by our reports that most of our calls. But I don't have figures together this month, I'll have them next month, so this is just kind of preemptive. We didn't get the other big grant we wanted to maybe replace with bunker gear, so next month I'll have some figures together. I may have to cash in a little CD stuff, and just kind of something to heads up about for next time, so. But other than that, I don't have anything, unless you have questions.
Any questions for the Chief?
Oh, I want to say thank you to you guys for helping with the school.
The best, the best part from what I heard was getting misty wet, so. And I hate, I missed that, I hate I went there.
All right, Christine, what's the treasurer's report?
I don't have very much on the treasurer's report, just to be really honest with you. My first of the month was so insane, because Amanda was on vacation, I didn't even look at financials as close as I should have, so. I will have a very thorough report for the end of June, because it'll be an end of quarter also, but there was nothing way out of the ordinary on the reports. I do want to report that we had two hundred and forty loads taken to the city cleanup over this last weekend, and a lot of positive feedback down there. It was, it was handled very professionally, it was kept very clean, so it went very well. And if, if anybody has not signed up for trash, or if you know of anybody that has not, please have them contact us. Basically, what we are going to do is fill everybody, and then take those off as we hear from people. And that way Trash W, our inland's going to go out and put cans everywhere, and then we'll go back and have them pick them up. It makes logistics much easier for them. They have another company that they contract to come out and do all that, so it's easier for them to go out and put them out, and have to go back and pick up a few than to go out and put out four hundred and still have four hundred people that haven't signed up for it, and have to go out and put those out. So, so first of all, if you know anybody that hasn't signed up, or someone that takes their trash somewhere else and doesn't want trash service in West Fork, have them contact us, so we can get that taken care of. Second of all, after water bills go out, if you guys get calls and complaints that they'll be in charge for trash and they didn't want to be, tell them that it's going to take a while to get some kings out. We'll get it all straightened out, just call us, and we'll, we're going to adjust off anything that needs to be adjusted, so.
That's supposed to start next week, right, the delivery of the cans?
The delivery of the cans will happen... I did one, so I do.
Because I'll have to think that I've lost mine.
The, um, carts, I believe, will be delivered the last week of June.
Last week of June?
Twenty-second, I think, is what it is.
You told me, you said recently, it could be as early as next week, carts start, so if you start seeing them, sure.
They're going to bring them down to the city shop first, and then they'll start to run out to...
There's some recent confusion, too, and people that can still go with Trashway.
Yes, there is.
So that needs to be somehow addressed, that we have one trash load.
We have, Tom has already sent them, has sent Trashway a letter. Trashway's sent out multiple letters, and Trashway's attorney has sent us a letter, so it's, it may be an ongoing thing for a little while, but I think, Tom, you've talked to inland.
I have, and they want to, they want to get a letter out, too, and they're going to work on, they're, they're having a lot of success, though, when they go meet one and one. He sent two people to do that, they're having good success. Four, five, or six, actually, six, six or seven. They're confused, we need a letter that the mayor can sign, that's going to happen. What's the nature of the letter from Trash W's attorney? They're advancing a pretty ridiculous fiction that it's a residential only and not commercial, even though he bid on commercial. There's a couple of places where the title says residential trash, but he bid on everything.
I can't hear you, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
About residence on commercial.
Trashway wants to keep serving commercial people, and so they're advancing a theory that they'll have to obey by the franchise or commercial, so. The bid was pretty clear. Bid was crystal clear, I showed you his own bid.
All right. Any other questions for Christine? I have one, Christine. One, the purchase of that tractor.
Yes.
Did half of that hit last month, or? I was looking at the wastewater fund, I saw the twelve-five.
Yes, the water paid half of that, and street paid the other half.
Okay, all right.
Alright, so now we can move into new business. Getting Nick out of here. This is, Nick has come to us with another change order. Uh, and this is my favorite one yet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
Right.
Once, yeah, it's good because there's no, no cost increase. Actually getting twenty bucks back, right? Yeah, this one, um.
They're going to get it back.
Yeah. Now, this is the one we've been talking about. It, it's out there in West Fork Acres. You know, we originally, you know, we've, we've replaced over a mile of sewer out there and we moved them, you know, the existing sewers were out in people's yards, you know, trees growing through them and everything, and we made the decision to move it into the street away from the tree, so we don't run into this problem twenty, thirty years down the road. Well, that means we got to cut the street and cut all the services in, so if you, many of y'all have probably driven out there, it's, it's pretty tore up and uh, we originally were going to come through and do a, uh, just a, what we call a T patch repair. It would be an asphalt pavement repair and smooth it up with the existing section, but once we started seeing how much, how significant it was, it was going to look like a zipper up and down every street, um, we went to ANRC and uh, threw out the idea, I know Isaac had talked to a paving subcontractor about the potential to overlay the neighborhood in lieu of doing the pavement repair. And we were able to, um, Davis was able to get a good bid from a subcontractor that uh, was less than the cost of doing the T patch repair. So this is a change order that takes care of that. So we're deducting out all the, what we're calling asphalt surface restoration, putting in a two inch overlay on all the streets there. And then I did have to add in, we've got a, we've got a sewer service line behind Bank of Fayetteville that we got to tie in there that we, once we got into it, realized it was in bad condition. They need to, they need to go under the driveway by the uh, teller windows there, and we figured it'd be better to directional bore under that rather than make a big open cut across there. So we added that in, but got all that to balance out for less than the, with basically twenty dollars less than, than what the cost was going to be, so. It's, it's a good change order. Um, for once I'm not coming at y'all with more money, so. But uh, I don't know if y'all had any questions on specifics there, but uh, but basically when they, when they get done doing all the sewer service work, they'll come through and make sure the surface is clean and ready for the asphalt and will come through and hopefully come through in one big swoop and do it all at once, so. But uh, oh, time wise, they, we did talk about time. Their contract did run out on June ninth as far as days, and they asked for an additional sixty days, which we talked about at the committee meeting last night and felt that was a reasonable request for them to finish up what they're doing and, and get everything buttoned up, get the neighborhood paved and get the project closed out. They've, they've overall done a really good job. I feel like um, um, they've, they've, they've progressed. They haven't sat idle and they've, they've done a lot of, a lot of extra work that we've thrown at them along the way too, so we thought that was a fair request, so. Little questions?
Okay.
No, thanks.
And we'll need to take a vote on whether to approve a change order request.
I'm going to approve it.
Second, okay. So, motion to approve change order number five and to grant an extra sixty days extension onto that contract. That was the motion.
That was it.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Alright, so up next we have uh, an appointment to the planning commission of Darryl Harnish. Walter Harnish. Why does I have Darryl Harnish on my name?
I bet. Darryl.
Okay, well, that's good. I was like, huh, that'd be weird if I put out a different name. Yeah. It's a new one. I need to go by the courthouse to get a name change real quick.
Alright, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, no worries.
You guys have any questions for Walter? No?
Alright.
Volunteer.
Yeah.
I am too. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, and I've talked to, we have, we have uh, some other applicants uh, for this commission. This is a commission I really want to get filled up. Uh, I want to get regional planning in here with, with pay regional planning. I want to get them in here to do some, some educational uh, uh, work with the commission to let them know that uh, you know, this is a bigger commission than what we've used it for in the past or can be. Uh, and I think it's vital to, to the growth of the city, so bear that in mind.
I'd like to help with that, yeah.
So do we take a vote to approve that? Uh, committee, I think we do. Well, um, so thank you, Walter.
I'm proud, thank you.
I would like to, to go ahead and add a few members to that, fill it up while we're voting on this. Do I have to change? Do I do that now or do I need to wait till mayor's comments?
Uh, you can certainly do it now. I, I think I've voted on them all at the time.
Okay, alright, so.
Thank you much.
Uh.
Thank you.
We have Walter here, uh, and so I would entertain a motion to approve him to the planning commission.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign? That motion carries. So, as a new mayor, I thought I'd made a mistake this week. And I corrected my state, my mistake. I wanted to find out that I was actually okay. That's usually when I'm wrong.
I believe so.
I figured it'd be, yeah. So, um, I was under the impression that, that the planning commission needed to recommend members, and typically they do. Uh, you know, they will recommend them. However, uh, the planning commission is, now has five members on it. I would like to go ahead and get that commission built up. That way we can get regional planning scheduled. Uh, so we had Walter apply. We also had four other candidates apply. Um, I would like to uh, recommend uh, those candidates at this time. You said one at a time.
How many members are we, what's the full number?
Well, uh, we need three more.
Yeah, I was going to say, may interject just a little bit. Basically, we, we need three more. Um, we're operating with four. Uh, myself, Stalver, uh, Jackie Bonner, Joan Wright, and uh, Dan Baker. We've lost, uh, of course, uh, Steve Williams passed away. Um, over the last six months, we've lost uh, uh, Leslie Skates, Ron Sidebottom, and Bill, um, Griffith just resigned as uh, chair last, at the last meeting, so we, we definitely need an added.
So full number is seven?
Seven. Seven, seven to, I, I, I mean, minimum five for, four for four, but seven is the full board.
Yeah.
Seven is the full.
Right now you have four.
We have five.
Five.
Five, we have five now as of your vote.
Do you have two more to vote?
I have two more I'd like to recommend.
I think more than that makes sense.
Okay. So first I'd like to recommend Steve Winkler to the planning commission. I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, next I'd like to uh, recommend Dwayne Boyd to the planning commission. I'll make that motion. All those in favor say yes?
Yes. Isn't he on the worms or anything?
He is. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Misty, that's a, that's a good point. I should have gave you a moment to talk about that before we took the vote. And, and I would like to keep people on one committee. Um, I put some thought into this. Uh, Dwayne obviously has a, a vital role on the water committee as he, you know, he's a manager for the Washington Water Authority. But I thought that would play well into the planning commission to have someone of that expertise on our planning commission. Uh, and a little bit of cross uh, connect on that. I, I thought it was a good idea to go. Uh, part of, part of our growth is going to include water, sewer, so I thought it was.
He, he owns infrastructure.
Yes. Yes, sir.
According to, I'm seeing here, um, the municipal code thirteen point oh four, uh, since I was a member of the planning commission, all members shall be qualified electors and senators and shall not hold any other municipal officer or appointment except membership in the moment of board of zone. It's just, that's from the municipal codes. I don't know if that's valid or what, but according to code, if a person can't serve on the planning commission, it's also appointed to another commissioner.
It's a committee to.
Well, now there's.
It's a committee, not a committee. That's, that's confusing.
Well, it says another officer. It says another, what it says is another, uh, of course, I'm not a lawyer. I can't interpret that, but uh, it says except membership of, was it hold any other municipal officer or appointment.
Okay.
Is the committee appointed? Or are they volunteer?
You know.
I always split hairs.
I'm going to rain on that. I, I, I would rather be conservative about things like this, and here's why, you guys. Is because there's two doctrines. There's doctrine of incompatibility. I don't think the two offices are incompatible, the two committees. They're not going to run up against each other and be incompatible, but I, I, I think it's worth being conservative because if you get a vote for a rezone or a preliminary plat or a final plat, and then someone attacks that because of that, you know, someone wasn't able to serve, it can really inconvenience that applicant a lot. They're going to have to hire a lawyer to defend that and uh, so it might be worth being conservative. Uh, I'd love to have a guy, just with his expertise as y'all are describing, but it would be a shame if with his presence caused someone to have to suffer his suit over, you know, a rezone or something like that.
Well, is it ambiguous on the committee or is it?
No, I think it's a change from the commission or is it solid? I think that word, that word appointed, I think it applies to anything. It applies to committees, commissions, some councils. I just think it's worth being conservative about it.
Kind of those questions again.
We can change that law, you know, we can change it pretty easily, amend that part of the code to allow this, and that's not uncommon.
If, if he can't serve, if we, we decide that he can't serve both, can he pick?
Well, sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but also I think, you know, that, the, the thing that Steve was quoting, you know, it, it makes sense when the two are, especially when they're incompatible. And uh, if you really want to be careful, like, one of the things that's meant to prevent, I think, one here that was written is that sort of city council crossover, because that was allowed by State law to cross over by city council. So the city says we don't want that. It's because they want to keep that separate. Not a bad idea. So, but I think the way it's written that Steve just read, I, I don't think I'd put the guy on both. Until you get that changed. Which again, you could do quite easily.
In the past, you've recommended that as a council member, we shouldn't be on those committees also.
I have. I have.
I mean, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I hate to, hate to keep somebody out is good, but if you could wait another month
Right.
for him, then you can get that, we can amend that law.
And also the doctrine rises that he can abstain from a vote if he, if, if there's a conflict.
Well, anybody does that, right? Anybody abstains when there's a conflict.
Right.
But I think, um, so.
Do we need to vote to take him back on?
Or just, yeah, amend that and go to, if you want to go to your next personal list.
Well.
Or, or.
We'd like to talk this for a second.
Then why don't we just, um, hold it, not make that affect it. In other words, you've got to do a vote anyway until we get that law changed, or you can be appointed again if you want to, so.
Okay. Yes, sir. I think you'd be a valuable resource, because part of your impoverishment, uh, in addition to people is uh, and not to denigrate anybody that's served up to this point, but you want someone that understands infrastructure on the planning commission. You would be an asset.
Totally agree.
I understand collusion or, or cross contamination, the reason it was written anyway, but we do need to go ahead and how do we, uh, do you need a motion to tide this over and change the ordinance?
Why don't you do that? Why don't you make that motion, Joe, and uh, just to stay it for a month until we can give the ordinance change? If y'all change, choose to change the ordinance, you may not. But if you do, then that would be the way to do it.
Well, I will, I will make that motion with the stated intent of wanting to change the ordinance. Okay. And this is a motion that we're going to table, appoint them.
Just stay it.
Stay. To appoint them, okay. So we have a motion in second?
Yes.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign?
So y'all conduct your business for another month?
Oh, yes, we can, especially with five, we get, we get our full participation. That's enough for, or we have decided to wait to appoint new chair, vice chair, secretary. We're just going to fill it as we can until we get a full board. And then figure out who's got the best tools for each position and, and make those work.
Steve, I appreciate you bringing that up.
I'd just like to clarify, uh, I, I agree that this, this gentleman is a resource and be very good. I, it's nothing against him personally, but my point is
Absolutely.
If, if, my point is if we're going to have a municipal code, that's the rules and we go by that. Changing the rules is perfectly fine.
Sure.
But we should follow the rules.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Uh, just a suggestion, can you be a non-voting member of one, one or the other?
We don't, we, we don't have that on there currently. Uh, yes, ma'am.
What about it, the consultant?
Uh, potentially we could do something like that. So, yeah, we have some options. Uh, we have some options.
Can you tell us who has applied?
I, I certainly can. Uh, so the other applicant was TJ Howerton, who is a member of the Parks Commission. And so that, that's the reason I didn't go to, uh, to recommend him, uh, because he's already another member as well, so. Those two are actually. Yeah. I think that's okay.
Yes, I should have told you.
Yeah, okay. So while we're on this, I would also, uh, we have a recommendation for the water commission. Uh, and I feel this is a great recommendation. This came out of the water commission last night. Uh, Jace Branson has been recommended to fill a spot on the water commission. Worked twenty-seven years for the city of Fayetteville in water and sewer. Uh, this is a great addition, again, in that same theme of growing our infrastructure, uh, and planning, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Jace. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
He's got down right now.
He is, uh.
He's back to work, so.
So we have a short agenda. I'll go ahead, uh, those of you, Jace, like I said, has worked for the Fayetteville Water and Sewer for twenty-seven years. Um, he went knocking on a door the other day to do some testing and was attacked by a dog, uh, when the, when the homeowner opened the door. In, in which he was bit multiple times and I don't know if he fell. I, I, I assume he was probably running, but.
He twisted it when he came off their patio.
Broke his leg in three spots.
Broke his.
Broke four toes, four toes.
A part of his ankle and his fibula.
Yeah, so, uh, maybe, he may not, he may be ready for the next, since they just had a meeting last night. Uh, he's going to be a great addition to the water and sewer committee, absolutely. So, thank you guys for that. Uh, so our next item of business is our contract with the Washington County Animal Shelter. Uh, hope everyone took opportunity to read this. And so of particular note, the, the price per animal is going from eighty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah.
And ten dollars a day?
Ten dollars a day, yes. Uh, and so, uh, many of you residents that are in attendance, I mean, everyone knows we have an issue with, with dog control. We have a budgeted eleven hundred dollars this year for animal control. Uh, we spent eighty-five. So, uh, we haven't, haven't approached our budget, however, um, we unfortunately are having to use our police department to police this. And the police department is trying to return dogs. Uh, you know, if they have a collar, they're trying to take them home to the owner, uh, simply to save money. You know, in the past, we've had residents taking the dogs to the pound for us, uh, and we, it almost bankrupted the city, to be quite honest. Uh, I mean, we, we've had up to twelve thousand dollar, uh, expenditures for dog pound, uh, visits, so. This is something that we're going to have to address. Uh, this is a Band-Aid, this uh, this current contract. We don't really have a choice. Uh, this is, this is who will take our animals for us. Uh, you've noticed in there, a resident cannot take an animal unless they're accompanied by a written letter from a city personnel. But this is something we need to, we need to start looking at. Uh, Steve and I spoke extensively over the weekend, uh, probably more than he cared to, but uh, we, we do have a real need in the city of not only policing this better, uh, and, and finding a solution to it, but also, uh, we, uh, as I mentioned, we need some, some other inspection services as well. Not inspection, but uh, code enforcement. Uh, that's not a good position for our police department to be in. I think John would agree with that. Uh, Brian, uh, mentioned it to me, that it puts police officers in a, in a bad position. They go into enforce tall grass, uh, you know, next thing, they see something else, well now they're, uh, you know, they, they were, they were on the property for the. uh, you know, next thing, they see something else, well, now they're, uh, you know, they, they were, they were on the property for the wrong, you know what I'm saying? So, it puts our officers in a bad spot, having them enforce these codes, uh, even, even enforcing our, our, uh, animal issues. So, that's something that we need to look into, um, I don't know how to, I don't, I don't have the answer to fix it, but as a council, we need to, uh, to be considerate of this as a, as a, as a larger issue, and try to, try to rectify it. Because a hundred and fifty dollars a dog, that could get expensive quick. So...
I don't think that's a very good solution.
What, what's that?
That, that whole contract.
Yeah.
Is there not any way we could any of that cost the problem?
Here's the, and, and John, maybe you wanna address that, uh, but, but I think a lot of our problem is, most of the dogs that get taken up there are dogs without a collar, we have no idea who they are, who they belong to, and so there's no way for us to get that money back.
And I'm not gonna come tell you if it's gonna cost me.
Exactly. Yeah, if I know I've got a hundred and sixty dollar bill racked up, I'm, that dog's probably gone, you know, it's tired of being at any place. You know what I mean? I mean, I think, I think that's, I think that's a mindset.
No, I wouldn't do that with my dog.
Yeah.
No, I get it.
Well, most of them are microchipped nowadays.
I think, I think most of the dogs, Misty, I think most of them that are microchipped are collared or better kept. You know, I think, I think...
Get their dog back.
Yeah.
I think it's everybody else that...
We've pretty much taken the position over the last two years, because the costs have gotten so out of control, that we don't go pick up a dog unless it's vicious, or unless it's tearing up trash or doing something, but for the most part, if people call us and say, they're a stray dog, we're like, don't feed it, we shoot it away, it'll go somewhere else. If you don't feed it, it'll go somewhere else.
Well, that, that's like that one time we took that litter of cats at eighty-five dollars. Cats, yeah, and so, well, I mean, it's, it's a real issue, that's not the best way for the city to handle that. You know, I mean, it's not, but unfortunately, that's where we're at.
Have, have we ever looked at the effectiveness or, you know, whatever, whatever it be, efficient to have a code enforcement officer that could do the grass, the yards, the trash, the dogs, the, you know, would that, I mean, is that something that...
I think it's something we look at, I don't think we have a forty-hour position for it, uh, which makes it difficult, because dogs are at large, uh, at, at any time of the day, right? Uh, you know, code enforcement's a little bit easier to maybe do, you know, some part-time, you know, or maybe a cost share with another city. There's some options out there, it's just, we don't have a forty-hour position for this. However, we're getting to a point where, uh, you know, we need to start enforcing some of the codes we have on the books, uh, you know, the, the Greystone subdivision's a great example, is here tonight, uh, this dog issue, so...
Well, and I'll have to give our community a thumbs up, because the, the one webpage is basically turned into a lost dog page, and we've got people in the community that are willing to hold on to these dogs until somebody, boy, and the new veterinarian is, you know, checking for chips, they did before, but we have a new dung pole veterinarian, just about a vet na, vet school, so, you know, and I know we had a lady that I tried to, the dog had been returned on Davis Street multiple times, and someone paid for that dog to be taken to the pound so they could get a better dog. So we have good, they, people are trying.
Absolutely, people are stepping up.
Yeah.
That, that doesn't, uh...
But this, I mean, and I've realized that the, less the animal shelter at Washington County has struggled, so they, their hands are tied too.
Yeah. It's a bad position, but do know, the city, the city can do better. Uh, we need to do better at this, at this issue and, and the other code enforcement issues where we have run the growth there. So, uh, like I said, I don't have the answer, but there's, there's a lot of options that we can look into, uh, be thinking about it. That being said, is there a motion to approve our, our contract?
We don't have a choice.
No.
We'll make that motion.
Second?
A second.
I agree with you, you need it.
I'll maybe sit to my stomach to read that, but...
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign?
I think we need to be working on something.
Agree.
Very much so.
Next item of new business is to approve a new street name. This is the street that is going, the new street going in behind Harps. Uh, I'm sure you read my post on the internet, uh, on my website, did you read that? Steve read it, Steve read it and was mad at it. I told you out on it.
Steve's always mad at it.
So, so we, we have three, uh, three houses going in on the hill behind Harps, uh, three big homes, uh, we have hundred square foot homes going in up there, uh, and so, the, the road is extending, uh, behind Harps up the hill there. Uh, has everyone seen that? So, that is, that is what we are, uh, what he's wanting, uh, a name for, is that street. So his first, uh, his first choice is Cedar Springs Place.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second? Uh, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign?
Is that the building?
Motion carries. What's that? Dan Patrick? It's the building.
Probably is, about the same age, probably.
Tony? Sorry, I should've asked that, but, no, he's a younger guy, he's younger than I am. So that concludes our new business, uh, we don't have any old business, uh, I do have a couple of comments. Again, uh, be mindful of, uh, the Fourth of July celebration on July the third at six o'clock. Uh, Chad will welcome volunteers, uh, Economic Development Beautification Committee gave me a note to pass along, um, they're gonna, we've talked about, uh, them building the memorial, uh, down here by the, the city, uh, city buildings. They're gonna have their first meeting, uh, as a, as a committee for the, the memorial. Okay, so they're, they're putting a committee together, have a committee for the memorial, uh, it's a West Fork Veterans Fire and Police Memorial Committee. Uh, this isn't something affiliated with the city, but it's, that's who's gonna help them design that and put it together. So their, their first meeting is gonna be June the twentieth, it's on a Tuesday at seven o'clock here in City Hall.
That's after the Economic Development.
Right after the Economic Development Committee?
Yeah, so, we have six thirty, and then at seven, we'll, um, devote the rest of the time to...
Also, I'm gonna bring it up, you may have already known, but s- someone has built a memorial at Cinnamon Cemetery, I, I, at, like, Cinnamon Church. If you have not seen it, you need to go, I've got a picture on my phone, it is lovely. I'm, I'm not sure who actually did it, I heard that they were related to the prayers, that's all I know, but it's, I've got pictures, it's gorgeous.
And so, uh, but, that committee is looking for, uh, involvement, so anyone that's, that has time, would like to be involved in that, please come attend, attend the Economic Development Beautification Committee meeting at, at six thirty, and then stick around for this one at seven. Okay? I bet you will. Next, uh, and lastly, um, I appreciate your patience on the, uh, search for a police chief. As I mentioned, uh, we had, uh, two Fayetteville officers, Doug Pope and Craig Stow assisted in that. Uh, we had nine candidates, we narrowed it down to four, um, requested some more information, talked to some different people. In the end, we, we all agree, and so I am happy to appoint John Nelson as the next West Fork Police Chief. John, I want you to, I wanna, uh, let you know that, uh, Doug and Craig were, um, uh, fully behind that. He stood out among the candidates, uh, and I wanted to tell you that your work here as interim chief in the last two months, you've shown extreme leadership in some difficult, uh, situations, uh, and great maturity, and so I appreciate that. You're, you're the new face of the police department, so good luck to you. That didn't take long, did it? John, I also wanna let you know that, um, uh, in the decision, I spoke to, uh, several of your peers around the city, and they were elated at the, uh, the appointment, so I wanted, I wanted you to give, give you that vote of confidence as well, uh, the city is behind you.
Absolutely.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign?